Okay. I have change in status, a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie DeLaGuetti, prosecuting attorney for Ashley Happley. I'm looking at her husband, okay. Okay. I hope I didn't butcher too bad then. As a receptionist, administrative assistant two with an annual salary of $40,000 effective March 7, 2024. Change in status received from the Honorable Tony Petrucci, county clerk for Lori Graham. She is going from payroll coordinator to payroll manager with a salary increase from $48,078.37 to $54,000. That's effective March the 1st, 2024. Let's see. We have approval of the minutes. We'll have to pull those out. The Commissioner Boyd was not here. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes for February 13, 2024?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries, purchase order log. Okay. Next up, they said we have a resolution here for farmland preservation. They said they would like for us to read it, but I can probably pass it along or I can... Let's see, where's it at here? Oh, we got the way up. Oh yeah, here it is. Okay. Alrighty. This resolution, the County Commission of Berkeley County, West Virginia authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Home Cons... No, wrong one. That's for the public hearing. Is it in here? Oh boy. Yeah, there we go. Let me try here again.
Got a little bit ahead of myself.
Okay. "In support of the Voluntary Farmland Protection Act, whereas the West Virginia Legislature unanimously approved the Voluntary Farmland Protection Act in March of 2000, and whereas since 2000 over 44,000 acres of agriculturally important farmland has been permanently protected in the state of West Virginia for current landowners and future generations. And whereas agricultural community of Berkeley County provides resources of agricultural products for the citizens of the state, nation, and internationally. And whereas the agricultural community of Berkeley County enhances tourism, protects worthwhile community values, institutions, and landscapes which are inseparately associated with traditional farming, and whereas the Voluntary Farmland Preservation Act of 8A-12 enables Berkeley County landowners to voluntary protect their agricultural property through perpetual conservation easements held by the Berkeley County Farmland Protection Board, thereby helping to control the urban expansion which is consuming land, topsoil, and woodland of the county. And now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission reaffirms its commitment to the perpetual preservation of Berkeley County's agricultural resources and enabled into the Voluntary Farmland Protection Act, 8A-12-1 sequence, and it is adopted this 29th day of February 2024." Do I have a motion to adopt the farmland preservation... Oh, as part of the consent agenda. Okay, I can do that. All right. Is that okay for your all's well-being? Was it clear enough? Clear as mud?
Better than the first one. You all know RISA, of course. In case you don't know, the other people here are board members on the farmland. Tom Gleason is the board president, and George Miller back there is one of the board members, too.
Well, welcome this morning. And we will get this signed and attested and get the clerk... He attested, didn't he, the clerk?
And verify. I think we were at 8,600 acres at this point in Berkeley County that has been preserved so far. And there are several federal farms that are under... in the application process now to be approved.
Yes, indeed.
Should hit 9,000 here at some point this year, right?
Yeah. That's a lot of acreage. Well, good. All right.
Berkeley County has 204,000 acres in Berkeley County, so whatever percent that is, it's still under 5%.
240,000 acres?
204,000 acres is in Berkeley County. No, that's the whole county. That's the whole county. Yeah, that includes everything.
How many farms?
Well, like I said, there's almost 9,000 going to be in farmland, but how many other farms are out there?
According to the last instance, I haven't looked at the one. I think it's about 75,000.
Well, I can date myself. When I was senior in high school, I worked for a crop duster out at the airport and was his ground crew. And we sprayed that one year. I think we were almost at... Between a tri-state area, we flew around. It was almost 40-some thousand acres of crops when we sprayed that year.
Wow.
That was a bunch.
Yeah.
Lot of long days there. All right. The resolution, can I have a... I'm sorry?
We thank you all for attending today, being here, and we hope to continue the relationship with our farmland protection here in Berkeley County.
Most certainly.
Yeah, we all realize that a lot of farmers are under a lot of pressure for development, you know, just because, you know, a tractor now is well over $100,000. You know, the cost of their machinery has risen, the cost of their fertilizer has risen. All those things continue to go up, but a lot of the products have not. So, you know, fortunately, there is a program like this that they can turn to, still keep the farm, still farm it, and it'll be held, you know, forever in its easement. So thank you all for what you do and helping people through that process. And I know you have a grading process that you use, and it's probably the most fair process that could be applied. So thank you for what you do.
Yep, it's... We're slowly dwindling down the fillable acreage, that's for sure. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We'll get... Yeah, we want to... You all want a picture with the resolution? Okay. All right, we'll take a quick break. Okay, alright, we'll take a quick break, so. Okay, we're back in session. Uh, next up at nine fifty, we have bid openings. Uh, we have board meeting reports, we'll do those afterwards. Uh, Chad, you want to fill us in a little bit on the RFP for SWAT equipment?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Your first bid opening is an RFP for SWAT equipment, this is a bid that was previously put out, however, uh, after it was awarded, the vendor was unable to honor the price that it was awarded at, so it had to be reopened. Um, you've received two bids today, they were posted on our website, social media, published in the Journal, and certificate of publication is present.
Alright, that was quick. Start unzipping them.
Oh, I apologize, three, I forgot. We have three bids for this.
Three bids?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, from Atlantic Tactical Incorporated, out of New Cumberland, PA. Uh, total bid price is thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. And that's for quantity of fourteen at twenty-two fifty-nine each. New Cumberland, P, F, P, A. This is Kessler Police Supply, I'm sorry?
I got criticized by one spy watches our meetings all the time about how this, uh, bid opening takes so long. I said, well, tell me how to do it any other way, we'll, we'll do it, but, uh, you can't open them until the, the time of the opening, so--
This here is from, uh, I guess Chrysler Peace, Chrisler Police Supply Incorporated, Jeffersonville, Indiana. Um, total bid price is thirty-four thousand, three hundred, at, uh, and the quantity needed is fourteen at twenty-four fifty each. And this is the last one, the third one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This one here is from Paramount Tactical Solutions, uh, Bunker Hill Road, Jerks Town. Twenty-seven, I'm sorry, thirty-eight thousand, four ninety-nine eighty-six, quantity is fourteen at twenty-seven hundred, forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that concludes that one. And RFP for SWAT training equipment?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the next RFP is for SWAT training equipment. Again, this is published on our web and social media, as well as in the Journal, and you have a certificate of publication present. You only received one bid for this.
Okay.
There'll probably be like five of these things before you get to that. Like open, you ever do the Christmas thing where you put it in a big box, and then they keep opening boxes until you get down to something about that size?
Like the Russian dolls?
Yeah.
One is a small one.
Oh, look, it's a ring. Alright. I think I found the right page. This is, uh, the vendor's name is Inveris, capital I, little n, capital V, E-R-I-S, Training Solutions, Swanee, Georgia. Total bid for, or the total for all equipment, one hundred sixty thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. And that's it? Only one?
Yeah, our next, uh, two bid openings are not until ten twenty.
Alrighty. Well, that concludes the bid openings, um. I thought we'd just go ahead and do the, uh, we'll come back to our board meeting reports. Uh, this morning, we have, uh, resolution for the Commission for authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium, but we have a public hearing first. Okay. Alrighty. What time?
Five o'clock.
Yeah, we can do that, how about that? Come on up and--
Yeah.
And, uh, just enlighten us a little bit on how things have been going.
Yes, hi. Hi, everyone. Um, nice new, uh, off place here, it looks nice, anyway. Nancy's--
Amazing what a little bit of paint and fabric will do.
Yeah, it looks good, nice. Uh, Nancy's trying the, uh, Community Development Block Grant and Home Administrator, um, so it's a pleasure to be here. I have some statistics from, uh, some of the public hearings we've had, so I can always, I can share you some information. Did you want to start the public hearing?
Well, we can't start it until ten o'clock, is that correct?
Well, I could share some of this information.
Sure.
Um, we've had two public hearings so far, over, in Martinsburg, and we had a huge, uh, a huge, about twenty people at the public library, and then we had some at about ten people at the mayor and council meeting. But, um, doing this work for about ten years, I've never seen the fever pitch for affordable housing like I've seen this past year. It keeps getting worse and worse and worse. So, the Health and Human Service Collaborative, um, has put together a actual document that actually shows how bad it is. Um, and I wanted to, I made copies for you, because, uh, Penny Porter went to the one at the library, and Jenny Schreiner went to the one at the mayor and council, and I was hoping Jenny would come here, but, um, it, it's just amazing how much it shows. The, the little blue box is what the needs we've been needing, the orange is the needs we have. So it's just really, it's just really amazing, um, I think. It's just amazing, um--
Thank you.
What's happening, um, you know, growth is happening--
Thank you.
But the affordability of the markets aren't following, and we've got some affordable, um, we've got some affordable housing here in the county. I'm trying to get a list from Jenny. Uh, I know Joshua Tree is one, and it is in the county, but it was a subsidized housing, um, uh, complex, and they ran through their affordability period, so now, um, it was a HUD, um, built place. Now they don't have to charge the, um, the lower rates, the six hundred dollar rate, so they're charging a thousand dollars, because that's a fair market rate, and people are, families are leaving. But, um, Zee, who works down at the House of Worth, I thought she was going to come too, she's, she, uh, said she has a, a Berkeley County teacher's family that's living in the back of their building, homeless, that doesn't have, uh, anywhere to go. So, I've never seen the fever pitch out there, and the, you know, screaming, um, for, that we need to do something for affordable housing.
Question, um, the, the example you just said that went from six hundred to a thousand, what was the reasoning for that?
Um, the affordability period with a HUD program runs like fifteen years or twenty years, and that expired, so the people that own it decided they would go with a fair market rents, and I think if you look on the back page, it gives you the hu-- fair market rents of a one bedroom is nine hundred and sixteen, two bedrooms is one thousand one fifty-one. So they went ahead and went with fair market rents, even though they had been living there before at six hundred, because they had been subsidized from the--
They get assistance from you guys to build?
Um, not, from HUD, not from, yeah. So, after they met that period, they just, you know, cause--
I'm assuming the building's paid off.
Mm-hmm. But there's other, uh, units around here, around our area, that's, you know, the same has happened, so, um, asked Jenny and Maggie to make a list, so that lets you all know, let the mayor and council know, the ones in the city, just so we know, are aware of, um, that this is happening. Um, so the affordability has just gotten less and less instead of increasing. Um, but, but I am working with a developer here, um, from HD recommended, John Maynard, and he was going to come and join us, but he has fifty acres of property in Inwood, and he wants to develop it affordable. So he knows he can't do like all fifty at once, he wants to start out slow and do, um, maybe like four townhouses. Um, but he's gotten all the information on how much, you know, our prices, the HUD prices are going. I've, uh, referred him to the Federal Home Loan Bank, they have funding, um, gonna learn about some, maybe some other programs, so he can leverage some of these programs, but he's the only one, uh, I really know that has come forward to say, I want to, uh, to build affordable housing. So I want to thank HD for, uh, bringing that to our attention, so we're trying to work with him.
And I will say, he wanted to do a community of, of tiny houses, not townhouses, that looked nice and were small and affordable, but evidently in Berkeley County, we have a restriction on the size of houses, and they can't, you can't build tiny houses here, because the square footage has to be bigger than what they are. That was a little disappointing to hear.
Right, you can build tiny houses in the city of Martinsburg, but you can't in the Berkeley County. Has to do with the size, and you have to deal with the, well, and your comprehensive plan, I don't know if you finally finalized that or not, but that's something that you all might want to address before you finally approve that. Um, and then the zo-- I guess the zoning ordinance will follow the comprehensive plan, I think, I'm not quite sure. You have to talk to Laura.
We don't have zoning in the county.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But, but there was a minimum size--
There was minimum set aside or something.
Below a certain square footage.
Subdivision.
Yeah.
Subdivision.
It could be, when that, when the commission gets back onto that, it could be something that's-- Because I think they would be better than townhouses, to be honest.
So, but it's something to, it's something to consider, you know, I mean, we got to think, uh, that's what I was going to say in the public hearing, we got to start thinking out of the box to address these concerns, because we've got too many people that, uh, need housing, so--
It's the time for our public hearing, so we'll, uh, I'll have a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Okay, this motion, or this public hearing is for, um, the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium, I guess to take any public comment that, uh, that would be raised. So it's open to the public if there's any comment.
Okay, thanks, I'll do a little introduction, and then we can open the floor. Uh, welcome to our third public hearing to receive our comments for FY twenty-twenty-four Home Annual Action Plan. Uh, we begin this process to prepare our one-year annual plan for the use of these funds and receive public input. We are also updating the city, and Martinsburg's also updating our five-year plan from FY twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight. So this is, uh, really important, so this also covers the Community Development Block Grant, which is just in the city, but also the home, which is the Home Investment Partnership Program, which covers the whole Eastern Panhandle, so it's really timely. Home is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. The city has been participating with the home program for, uh, since twenty, uh, two thousand seven, so this is our sixteenth year. We've received seven point seven million for housing assistance for the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley County, Jefferson County, and Morgan. Since the inception, we have predominantly used the home funds to support the first-time home buyer down payment assistance program. This past year, we assisted, uh, twenty-three first-time home buyers with GAAP finances to purchase their first-time home. In the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley County, Jefferson, and Morgan County, last year it was twenty-two, so we did a little bit more, but we still having trouble. Um, this past year, the program assisted eight first-time home buyers in Berkeley County, last year it was twelve, six in the city, seven in Jefferson, and one in Morgan. Uh, historically, we've assisted three hundred and forty first-time home buyers in Eastern Panhandle. Our seven point, four point seven million of HAP loans has leveraged forty-six million in home sales and forty-two million in the first mortgage loans. It's a ratio of nine dot, nine to ones in mortgage funding for each dollar. However, the housing market for first-time buyers has still been, has been, is slow, and it's really hard with the interest rate going up, and then the prices. Medium sale price for Berkeley is around anywhere from two hundred and seventy-seven to two ninety-nine. Our allowable housing cost for existing homes is two forty-seven, and for new, it's two ninety-two. Our income limits still remain low, and a Berkeley County schoolteacher salary is more than the forty-two seven allowable income for one person. These figures are from HUD, and I understand they still have not reflected the twenty-twenty census figures to increase the income. So, we've been, keep asking HUD, we keep asking our consultants, we keep saying, we need help, we need help with the income, uh, but nothing says, come of our pleas. They say, well, write letters to your senators, write letters to your congressmen. Um, we have a higher increase in Jefferson County because of the, us being closer to the, uh, metropolitan area, but not Berkeley or Morgan. Um, since this is our five-year update, now's the time to really start thinking out of the box, like I said earlier, and start-- the box, like I said earlier, and start putting all the eligible home activities into our plan like new construction of affordable housing, rehabilitation of affordable housing, conversion to affordable housing, tenant-based rental assessment. Like I said, I've been working in this area now for 10 years and the affordable housing needs has reached a fever pitch. And I was talking about the report, I passed out the report and it shows that we're really just scratching the bottom of meeting any affordable housing needs in our community. I'm sure we have some people here today that can attest to it as well. And as I said, we have the potential developer, John Maynard, that wants to build 50 acres of affordable housing in Inwood. So, I'll turn it over to any public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to, oh, I see that.
The floor is open to the public for any public comment for the, for the public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jonathan Harton. I'm a psychologist by training, but I'm also, prior to this, operated Mountaineer Recovery Center out in Kearneyville. And I've since turned that over, the operations, to Pyramid Healthcare, which now operates Mountaineer Recovery Center. Behind Mountaineer Recovery Center, one of the things that we noticed is that people would graduate from the program. Many people would leave very motivated about their sobriety, about their recovery. And because of the challenges with affordable housing that Nancy's already presented, many of them would be forced to go back into situations that were not very conducive to their recovery and either neighborhoods or back to families that enabled their addiction and they would relapse. And we saw them because they'd come back to Mountaineer for treatment again. And we saw that a lot of the issues were not necessarily because they missed something or they didn't have the skillset, but because they were back in the same environment. To try to address that need, we purchased 72 acres right behind the recovery center off of Van Meter Road and it butts up against the Route 9 4 lane and with intention of building what's called the Mountaineer Recovery Village. It's the first in the nation neighborhood established exclusively for the sake of housing people in early recovery. We had design plans drawn up by Fox Engineering. Those plans have been submitted to the engineering department and the county planning commission and those have already been approved. We have five, four phases of construction to be developed and we are in the first phase of construction at this time. With the ultimate intention in when the village is complete, it'll house up to 200 people and with their families. The phases are progressive so that the, kind of like in college, we start in first phase where members would move after they graduate from the recovery center and move into recovery residences. These are much more structured. They have a peer recovery coach living in the house. They are drug-tested and transportation is provided for them to get back and forth to work. So, it's a real wraparound of services. There's curfews, there's meetings requirements, but it's also affordable and it gives them a place to continue their recovery and reintegrate back into the community. We have a good relationship with Department of Corrections, probation and parole as well so that those individuals who might be approved to live there could also be having good communication with their responsible Department of Corrections officers. After they live there about six to nine months and they've established some stability, the idea is they could move to the next phases of the village, which ultimately we plan to have about 100 three-bedroom townhomes where members could live with their families. The only requirement necessary to live in the village is somebody in the household has to be in recovery. They don't have to be a graduate of the recovery center. They don't necessarily have to be even in treatment, but they need to be dedicated to recovery and demonstrating that in their lifestyle. We are, I don't have any printed materials here for you today. We have presented many to the planning commission, which as I said, have been approved, but I'll be happy to provide those. But we are looking for, the dependency of completion of the village is dependent upon funding. And we find that most of the time, many of the grant sources that provide funding will provide funding for personnel, for computers, for supplies, but will not provide funding for construction. And so, we are looking for different avenues to be able to, so that we can complete the village and be able to provide an outlet to address the needs that Nancy presented, specifically for those people who are in early recovery and trying to stay clean and sober. And obviously, that's something that housing is a big factor in sustaining people. So, I wanted to just make sure the village is on your radar. We've had Commissioner Gokunower come out. He's seen the construction that we have. Panhandle Builders is our contractor. We plan to have the first phase finished through some bank financing through Bank of Charlestown. That should be finished later this summer. But we're eager to move on to the second, third, and fourth phases. And again, that's contingent upon funding resources being available. So, I wanted to put that on your radar. And Peter is going to come up also, but we've had some good conversations about some other kinds of partnerships that can be mutually beneficial, not just for the residents of the village, but for people who might do the construction as well. So, I'll take any questions if you have any, but that's essentially the content I want to present.
This is just a public hearing, so.
Okay. I don't, from you.
If anybody has any questions.
So, do they rent the places where they live? They rent those and then you continue to own them as the turnover happens in?
Correct.
So, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, and we've put this out on the internet already. We have gotten the houses already approved by the West Virginia Association of Recovery Residences, which is different than some of the Oxford houses that in the community. It requires a higher level of fiscal and program oversight. And we're already getting referrals. People are getting on the waitlist from all around the state who want to come here because the jobs are here, but the housing piece is missing.
Any other questions?
You know, like I say, I did have the opportunity to visit there. I was actually there during the grand opening as well. And it's a wonderful facility and it has a lot of future help available for folks. There's a great opportunity there if we can just get kind of over that hump and get it secured and get it finished.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Quorm and I'm a local businessperson. Last 20-plus years, I've been in the mortgage industry and I have lived the affordable housing crisis. And what we're seeing, and I'm here really to support Nancy, we use her program all the time. And what we're practically experiencing is ratio concerns. People on smaller budgets are going to have higher ratios. So, HAP has already tried to address some of that. I would encourage them to expand it some more in terms of debt to income and overall ratios, housing ratios, and also increase the income limits. Just from my standpoint, we're seeing in Jefferson County, average financing loan amounts. So, after down payments, close to 380,000. Berkeley County's every bit of 320 on a practical, like, life basis right now. So, anything you guys can do to support that and affordability, I just here in support of Nancy on that. And then kind of my second hat is I have a social, we've started a social enterprise called Sea Appalachia. So, those of you who aren't familiar with social enterprises, they are for-profit businesses supporting a social cause. So, we're looking to manufacture affordable homes with at-risk communities. So, what we're talking about, people with addiction problems, veterans, homeless, single parents, and communities at large that are underemployed and underskilled. So, how that works is basically my proponent is profitability leads to sustainability. You guys are going to be receiving large amounts of government funds and the opioid crisis is not a year-long solution, as many as you know. We're going to deal with people for decades. So, the funding's important to get the counseling and the work, but we're going to need to put in work programs to create a sustainable business model to keep funding the needs of our at-risk communities. So, we looked, when you have a huge crisis, you need a huge market. That market's affordable homes. So, Sea Appalachia's actually only targeted towards the 50% area median income. So, in our county, it's about 57,000. Jefferson County, which is part of the metropolitan DC MSA, is actually 75,600. So, it's a little bit different there. But, so, we're basically trying to provide housing for everybody making less than that amount of money. Teachers, first responders, I mean, it's all the classic marketing or, you know, you know, terms that you hear out there right now. So, a lot of people are saying, "Hey, why would you even go into the market?" Because it's an unlimited market. It is a market for as long as I've known, has never been completely served and never will be, unfortunately. But if we bring in an automated manufacturing facility to build similar type housing, you know, there's an immediate jump-off point, 100 units, that then provides a cost break because the one, the one challenge we have here is individual businesses cannot financially support societal demands or costs. So, we have to make sure everybody in the process gets paid. You can't ask a small business to give 20% of their profit on a piece of land or a home that they've raised because that's their equity. So, we, when I looked at the problem, you, the problem's in the profit margin. So, you needed to build a social enterprise that will be sustaining, that won't run out of market or product, and will keep going. And basically, that profit margin just comes down. So, we think there's a lot of opportunity for collaboration, integration, and I think Berkeley County's ideally positioned to pursue that avenue.
What do you mean, that is in social what?
Enterprises.
Social enterprise.
Yeah. So, basically, it's a, think of Ben &amp; Jerry's is a classic example. You know, it's a for-profit business, but they invest in a lot of social missions, if you will. I think that one.
Clothing company?
He just sold his company and gave it to, you know, specifically social causes to the environment. Our particular focus in Appalachia and West Virginia specifically is obviously the opioid crisis. We have to find a sustainable solution. Any questions?
So, you're going to manufacture these homes and bring them in and set them on a foundation then? Is that how?
Yeah, so, to be clear, thank you for that. Modular construction is stick-built houses in a warehouse, unlike manufactured that'll roll in on metal frames. So, this will actually be a stick-built home. A lot of them you'll see, I think Ryan does, panelized walls, flooring systems, things like that. So, we actually, some of the discussions we're having is to start a plant here in Berkeley County. It is a replicable model. So, it's a model that is going to be built to address, say, the stuff in Weertun, you know, or the, you know, the wood crisis down there or in Georgia. So, the idea is there is more than enough demand and this model should be replicated across the board.
If I remember right, there was a panelized home.
Yeah, on 81?
I was up off the Corning Glass, up behind the Blue Ridge.
Yeah.
And also foremost had a modular home.
Yeah. And, you know, really, it's the old, I mean, aging, like, it's the old Sears model, right? Like, literally, people just used to order out a catalog. And it's, you know, we've got a business model, a model of a home that's 702 square feet, another one that's 742. And you, obviously, you can scale up, but there are real pressures and demands in terms of price points that you can't, I think, really, the average household, three or four, probably need a square, 1,200 square foot home. But that's just not going to be practical in terms of cost. We're still going to be hamstrung by costs. But I think it's a good solution that keeps everybody in the game and keeps rolling through. Everybody gets paid. I think that's the important part. Nobody's carrying the burden by themselves.
And you wouldn't have quite the depreciation as a manufactured home community.
That's why, but trust me when I say, we struggled with that because on a square foot, you can deliver manufactured home for 50, wholesale, $55 a square foot, but there is a perception and bias in the marketplace. But West Virginia has the highest housing percentage because of manufactured homes. I'm a huge fan of them. And obviously, all the improvements since '76 and 2006, I think, was the last big HUD adjustment, so. And just a quick math fact, we're now financing manufactured homes from $250,000 to $300,000. It's a shocking number if you're a local, right? Like, I remember they were 85 grand in the 80s, you know? So, it's a different world right now we're living in.
If you go back quite a few more years than that, a 14 by 70 or 68 home was under $23,000, brand new.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
All right. Any other items from the public?
Hi. Good morning. I'm Jamila Jones. I am so happy to hear about Sea Appalachia. I completed the Appalachian Regional Commission Leadership Institute, the last cohort. I'm currently in the Federal Reserve Rural Investment Collaborative, looking for solutions to invest in rural America and come up with ways to make money and speak to investors, but also to impact social change. I did go to the public meeting we had at the library. I think kind of if I had to synthesize what I heard in that meeting was that the United Way and other nonprofit groups can help think outside of just CBD, GE funds, and home funds. And so, I feel like there's some, you know, people in the room here that have ideas that might be addressed veterans, maybe addressed recovery, but also people that are not in recovery, that just need affordable housing, that may not want to stay in those same communities. So, I think you have like a myriad of people that need affordable housing and some unique challenges and maybe unique communities. But to address the problem, we would like to kind of put together a public-private partnership where we could work with the city and the county and kind of put the nonprofits in place to maybe pursue other funding outside of the CBDG to leverage the funds, come up with different matching funds, and develop unique solutions for the unique communities that all need affordable housing. So, I don't know how that happens. I just want to kind of like throw my little bit of spaghetti at the wall so it's kind of on everybody's radar. And just to say that I did find a HUD grant that will cover management and operating expenses for a said organization to come together and just kind of think through quantifying the need so that, you know, we can come together and still get paid too because those are hours of the day that we can't do what we normally do. But I think we don't know how big the problem is, so we need some of that research done and we all need to kind of put our heads together. And 7.7 million for three counties is not that much. So, I think if we leverage the funds, I mean, in ARC, if we start looking at power grants or if we start looking at Inspire, and that is to build, to build ecosystems around substance use, the substance use disorder. What's SED stand for? Substance Use Disorder Syndrome. Okay, but a lot of these grants that I come across that I can put together and pair with people, I kind of describe myself as a professional dot connector and that has a skill somewhere. I don't know where. I'm trying to figure it out. But when I get in a room with other people with good ideas, I can say, "Oh, I heard a grant for that. We can put it this way. We can leverage funds like this. We can capital stack it this way." So, I need to be able to talk with you guys and talk with the community. And we all need to come up with some unique innovative solutions. And that's the name of my nonprofit, Innovative Community Solutions. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other items from the public?
Thank you. That's everybody. John's not here, but he had somebody sent, give a document of all the, why we need affordable housing, and I'm going to pass that out to you. It was from Long and Foster and it's some more of the statistics. But this is basically a letter just saying that, and the statistics of the background of affordable, he has the rental numbers in here. He has, the average rent was 12,1,000. He has, the average rent was twelve-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-two, with four-hundred-and-sixty-four rental properties leased out in twenty-twenty-two. The average rent has soared to sixteen-ninety-five, with only four-hundred-and-five rental properties leased out. Our population is growing, and the affordable housing is shrinking. It appears that in two-twenty-three, this was two-twenty-three, the rent will climb again. The only answer to this issue is to add affordable housing. So this was coming from a relator that sent this to John for the need.
Nancy, is anything still happening with Habitat for Humanity?
Yes, we still have Habitat for Humanity. And there, they do receive home funding. They submitted a grant application. They were given, deeded a piece of land on East Burke Street in Hagerstown, I mean, in Martinsburg, and they're going to, they're asking from the funds to build a two-story affordable home.
They can only average, what, a home or two a year?
They, they built their last home last year, or no, it's two years ago, in Jefferson County, in Shepherstown, at Sage Place. And I think we gave them eighty-seven thousand. This house in the city of Martinsburg, they're asking for a hundred-and-eighteen thousand of our home funds. They still have that property, Auburndale, that's back there off of Humanitarian Way, and it's in front of the Public Works Building.
At Boston Street.
Off of Boston Street, but it's a mess because of some asbestos and things like that, so they have, they can't do anything. They can't move anything. They can't do anything until they finish going through some reviews, and then they'll be told that they can, you know. Basically, they've gotten some pricing now, costs about a hun, one-point-five million dollars to clean it up. So it's kind of a mess. So they have other, they want to build something in Berkeley, or do something in Berkeley, and they also want to do something up in Morgan County. They just are opening their REITs door so they can have more financial assistance to help them. So, so they're still here, and they're our only CHODO, our only community housing development organization. But, you know, I've encouraged other organizations that I've been meeting with, community networks who just lost some big money. I'm trying to get them to think about becoming certified as a CHODO, because they can utilize some of that funding. They have their, their land there on East John Street. They have plenty of land. They could possibly build a, a part of the shelter that would be for families, because that seems to be the biggest need in the community. So there are other avenues and people. It's just the financial and administrative capacity of the nonprofits or the organizations to be able to do all this. That's kind of the drawback.
Nancy, the Housing Authority within Martinsburg, do you work with them?
Yes, and that's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to tell you. They just hired a new executive director. And he, I'm not quite sure exactly when he's going to start. He came, it's coming from Charlottesville, but he helped turn the Charlottesville, Martin, Charlottesville Housing Authority around. He's been asking us questions about doing more affordable housing, out-of-the-box type of thinking. So, and he understands that his, it's not just the city of Martinsburg, but it's also, he serves Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan County with a voucher program. So they, he knows that, you know, his jurisdiction is bigger. And I think you're going to see a lot of improvements there and some partnerships coming from there, so.
Yeah, I tell you, they've, they've been very, very successful for a very long period of time, and they've done a great job, especially of maintaining their properties. And I don't know why they haven't been able to grow. I mean, I think Stonewall Haven was probably the last facility that they built, and I don't know what restrictions there are, what complications there are. You know, I just, I'm not educated on what they need to, to move forward. But even though I know they've been very successful, and they take very good care of their facilities, but they haven't been able to expand.
Right, right. They haven't grown, and the mayor knows, and I met with them a couple of years ago, trying to tell them with the new Home Art Program that we had some vouchers. And we'd never, so I think we're going to see some more, you know, some more funding, that we'll be able to do more. But the interim executive director, we met with her for a five-year plan, and she gave us some statistics, and the housing, the residents of the current housing is, is pretty high. It's predominantly elderly. A lot of elderly are in there. I think there's only forty-six families in the whole air, in the whole complex. It's three-hundred and I think forty-seven residents total, with the seniors and the other towers. But so it was, it was real interesting that, but she was able to help assist them kind of bridge the gap, and now the new executive director. But I'm sure they'll be reaching out to you to probably come meet you, just so, so you know that they're there. So I think we'll be hearing some, a lot more. I think we'll be doing more that, working together.
Any other items from the public? If there's not any, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Have a motion to have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We have two bid openings here. We're a little bit behind.
Oh, we need the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we got the resolution right here. Do you want to, want us to read it into the record or just adopt it, or?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a resolution for the County Commission of Berkeley County, West Virginia, authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July one, twenty-twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen-ninety provides for the creation of a home investment partnership program hereinafter referred to as home. And whereas the home regulations promulgated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under twenty-four CFR Part ninety-two authorizes units of general local government to enter into housing consortiums, cooperations, agreements, and whereas there is a need throughout the Eastern Panhandle of West Virginia to provide affordable housing for the low and moderate-income residents. And whereas the city of Martinsburg, county of Berkeley, town of Hedgesville, county of Jefferson, town of Bolivar City, and Charlestown cooperations, the corporation of Harpers Ferry, city of Ransson Corporation, I'm sorry, city of Ransson, corporation of Shepherdstown, county of Morgan, town of Bath, town of Paw Paw, West Virginia have formed a consortium that has been designated as a participating jurisdiction under the home program, hereby entitling the consortium to seek annual funding. And whereas the Berkeley County Commission entered into a three-year housing consortium cooperation agreement with an annual renewal clause for participation in the home consortium of the Eastern Panhandle. And whereas U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the expected, is expected to award the home consortium of Eastern Panhandle a home grant upon request and consideration for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. And whereas the county, the Berkeley County Commission recognizes the need to obtain funding for affordable housing and has identified the home program as a source of funds to meet this need. Now therefore be resolved by the commission, by the County Commission of Berkeley County that Berkeley County will cooperate with the city of Martinsburg, town of Hedgesville, county of Jefferson, town of Bolivar, city of Charlestown, corporation of Harpers Ferry, city of Ransson, corporation of Shepherdstown, county of Morgan, town of Bath, and town of Paw Paw, West Virginia, in a consortium for participation in the home program. And the Berkeley County Commission does hereby enter into a one-year cooperation, cooperation agreement for the period of July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and the other members, which from the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia. And a copy of this resolution is to be submitted in the request to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for approving funds, funding for the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia for the above fiscal year twenty-twenty-four home investment partnership program, adopted this twenty-ninth day of February, twenty-twenty-four. Have a motion to adopt the resolution. Have a motion to have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Okay. Thank you all so much, and thank you for your time this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right. Now we got a bid opening for RFP Vehicle Outfitting Equipment?
Yes, Mr. President, you have received two bids for vehicle outfitting. They were published on the web and through social media, published in the Journal, and a certificate, certification of publication is present.
This is Hall Public Safety Company, Beets Lawn Avenue, Alliance, Ohio. Does that sound right? For the lump sum for eight twenty-two-four Ford Police Interceptor Explorers, including outfitting, for one-hundred-eleven-thousand, seven-hundred-eighty dollars and eight cents. Hall Public Safety Company. Two copies there. It's a book, I think on there. They could have knocked off fifty thousand in paper saved. Could have saved a few trees. Dana Safety Supply. Got references.
Should be on one of the attachments.
There's a sales quote there. Nothing near, but just. Unless you add them all up.
Is there an attachment B? Instructions on the bid, whether the attachment B should have been on the first page.
Got the sales quote with all. Chad, we might have to let you cipher through this one. I don't see one specific number for, oh, here we go. Lump sum price, eight twenty-four police interceptor explorers per specifications including vehicle outfitting equipment and delivery, fourteen-thousand, nine-hundred-eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Total bid price, including vehicles, one-hundred-nineteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-three dollars and twelve cents. Did you?
So that includes the vehicle and outfitting?
No, that is just the outfitting of the vehicle.
Total bid, all vehicles included. Yeah. So if you take eight multiplied by the fourteen-nine-eighty-seven, you come up with the one-nineteen-nine-eighty. Does that include the bids?
We have one more.
No, one more. Midsize SUV.
Okay, for your final bid opening, Mr. President, you have received three bids for your midsize SUV. Again, these were posted on our website and social media, published in the Journal, and a certification, a publication is present.
I like those.
Zip tabs and zip strips.
Of course it should.
Yeah, we can't accept it if it's late. That's right. Was it postmarked any different than, or was there? Lump sum, midsize SUV per specifications including vehicle preparation and delivery, forty-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
Who's the bidder?
The bidder is Whiteside Deal Country at Clairsville, St. Clairsville, Ohio. Twenty-twenty-four, one lump sum, midsize SUV per specs, thirty-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-ten dollars. And this is Kent Parsons Ford, Shepherdstown Road. Good?
Pretty big difference there.
Keystone Ford. Just Keystone Ford. Where's it at? Let's see. It's configured, forty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Compare apples and apples, oranges and oranges.
These all the same vehicle?
No, they're different, different style vehicles.
Yeah, the older looks like Bronco, maybe Explorer. That goes with that. Say it wasn't a specification in the...
It just had to meet a criteria. All right, that concludes the bid openings. Now we go back to... Board meeting reports. Mr. Boyd, tell us something good.
Okay, well, I had a few meetings. Last week after we left here, I went to the library board meeting. Main focus there was, you know, they always go over their finances, and then the focus there is about the, of course, they have an upcoming HVAC they're trying to do, as they told us about in their budget request. Then they were also talking about the future of the laboratory system here in Berkeley County in Martinsburg, City of Martinsburg. And, you know, they had a company do a study, I guess you would say, and a whole market research on options of upgrades to the libraries or new libraries and those sort of things. And they've set up other meetings and they'd like some people to attend. The next one is actually an hour before the next library meeting, which the next library meeting will be, is it the fourth Thursday of the month? Four o'clock, so, all right, five o'clock, so this will be at four o'clock. It's just preliminary discussions on options and what they could do and different things. And then I turned around and I had another meeting with Gretchen, Director of Library, Librarian. Well, another thing was that legislation that's going through about the books and putting the librarians and principals and people on the hook for offensive books, which really is an open subject there and opens up a big can of worms, but talked about that a little bit.
Did I hear right, overheard maybe, I don't know if this is right or not, but the same book has different variations and they're questioning, I mean, same titled book has different, I don't know, things in it, but certainly if that one book happens to make it on a shelf, I think that's where the librarians are concerned, that if the wrong book is pulled for that one instance, it could be a problem, yeah.
Right, and they're required to be supervised in certain parts of the library, I guess. There's adult sections, children's sections, but the big question mark there is, you know, they say that it could be prosecuted and whatnot, but it's open to interpretation. It's who's offended. If somebody says they're offended, they can go call the sheriff, and the sheriff can come in and arrest the librarian because they have a certain book that somebody was offended by on a shelf, which is pretty open-ended in a, I don't know. Did it pass legislation, anybody know yet?
I don't know yet.
I don't think it's going through yet. I think it's in...
It has not passed yet.
No, yeah. I think it passed the House but not the Senate. So it's in committee, I believe, or it was as of last Thursday. Then I met with Gretchen again two days ago, just talking about different facets of what's needed and things with the library, possible library museum complex on the corner of King and Queen. She voiced her concern, not concern, but would like to possibly put together some meetings with a few of us and/or some city leaders to discuss options. You know, they had this company put this whole thing together, but, you know, she's a librarian and, you know, want to see different funding options and things. One of her things she would like to see is to maybe somehow obtain that building, two buildings over, make it a parking lot and a separate entrance there, because their biggest concern downtown is the parking for the library. There's not enough parking and handicap accessibilities there. People have to go a distance to get in the library. That was the extent of that. Then after that, I left there and grabbed a bite to eat and went to the museum meeting that evening at seven o'clock. In the museum meeting, we had a guest, the Director of the Jefferson County Museum. She was on by Zoom, and she was helpful, provided us with their policies on exhibits and what exhibits they accept and their, you know, terms and all those things. Then we talked about, I referenced them, that I'd had a meeting with Gary, and he had said that he thought he could find some space to start housing some items that people may start giving us, and then discussion on where some of the requested financing may or may not go for the museum and about drawings and development of the museum, because obviously we're in infancy stages. We have a board, but we have no money, and we have no direct movement yet, but we're in the works, so we just talked more about that. Then yesterday, the CBB had a meeting, and they had a long discussion about the new media team, and they came back with more decisive and more outlined definitions of what would happen with that company, and the board did vote to accept that company. What that becomes is $4,000 a month, $48,000 annually for this multimedia company to come in and work to do their ads, do everything that goes in every magazine, do videos, upgrade their image, their logos, their presence. And it's not to, because there are additional costs on top of that $4,000 a month, it's not to exceed $70,000 on the year, which would allow another, I think, to exceed another $22,000 or $22,000 on the year for video production and those sort of things. And then Susan moved from being the Communications Director, and that position will be removed, and basically that money will be assigned to this company, and then Susan will be moved to the new position effective March 2nd, so that there's no conflict. She'll become the Executive Assistant, and then this company begins on March 4th. So they did have in their budget for three employees, but were operating with the two, and she was a Communications Director, but she'll move now to the Assistant, Executive Assistant, and this company will take the budget of the Communications Director. That's where they're at with that, and that being said, I don't think I have any more meetings.
Steve?
Yes, last Thursday, our Ambulance Authority meeting was canceled due to a lack of form available, so hopefully they'll meet again in March. The only other board meeting I had was yesterday, our Senior Services meeting, and I am really optimistic about a lot of the new membership that's been appointed to that board. Becky Linton has taken over the fundraising part of that board, and she's off and running already. It's incredible, she's an incredible person, and she's got a lot of newer members supporting her and working with her, and I look for nothing but really wonderful things in terms of the fundraising that will be created there as a result of this new membership, so it's exciting. It's a 12-member board, and Pat Henry still is the President of that board, but I think we got a really good board in place there, so I'm really pleased with that. I didn't have any other board meetings, but I did want to mention that, you know, legislatively, as I continue to talk with the CCA membership almost daily and communicate with them, it looks pretty much like the bill in terms of eliminating the rollback thing is dead for this year, and it won't happen. It's really disappointing, but I think that, I think, I really think that a lot of the delegates and even senators don't understand it. And so I think we have to do a better job of educating them on exactly what this impact it has and why it was created in the first place. That was resolved back in early 90s, and it's no longer needed, and we just need to continue to push that. And then, of course, the other bill that could be very significant for us is the removal of zoning so we could charge impact fees. We do have a Senate bill in place, 530, that passed unanimously. It's still in government organization in the House. There's still some hope that we could get that to surface and possibly get it passed this session, but as frustrated as I am at this point, I don't know that that will happen either, so. It seemed like over the last couple of weeks, we have spent more time trying to get bills removed that would hurt us financially than spending time on working on ones that would help us financially, but we were successful in a couple of bills that got eliminated and taken off, and one, of course, was the impact of the jail fee per DM was going to be raised 33% in that particular suggested bill to $72 a day per prisoner, so thank goodness that got pulled. So it's winding down, and we'll assess it, I guess, with summer at the end of it, but I just, I want to express publicly my frustration with the whole, particularly the House of Delegates and what has happened there. I just don't understand, it just seems, maybe I'm from the wrong perspective, but it seems really obvious, the things that could really help us, and they don't get the attention that it deserves, and it's just really disappointing, and I guess I'd better shut up at that point and not say anymore, but...
You've been much more professional than I would be, so I'm going to keep my mouth shut. Thank you.
Especially with some of the things that went through there.
Eddie?
On Thursday afternoon, Jim, Gary, and myself met with CMC, their leadership, the Water District, Senator Manchin's staff, Shocky Corporation about the entrance and some other utilities that need to be taken care of down there and expanded. That was a good meeting. I hope it was productive for them. And yesterday, I met with members of the State and Local Development Authority with a corporation that is looking to come here, so I'm not able to discuss that yet, but I did put in that effort and that time to have that conversation with them.
I had several meetings to attend on Monday, and I didn't get the ones that were the counties, but however, I did attend a fundraiser for our two state troopers that were injured at that...
At the Moose this past Saturday?
At the Moose, yeah. It was very well attended, and the local support, when you look at the ones that showed up and the support that they gave, even as all of our uniformed officers, it just showed a unified promise, you know, for everyone that's out there putting their life on the line, and what would be first responders, public safety, the firefighters, I mean, everybody, everybody was there, and it was, I don't have a figure, of course, you know, what was raised, but if any indication of the bodies that were there, it was quite a fundraiser.
I think they sold 300 tickets, and that stopped over Friday, and there were only 10 left out of 300, so they probably sold all 300 is my guess. I wanted to mention too, Jim, you know, we had talked about maybe R and R was inquiring about maybe using the old courthouse to do their debates, which they do on Channel 10 and plus on radio each time there's a, you know, whether it's a primary or a general election, and they actually, Gary said, well, you know, we could open this room up potentially for them too, so they came yesterday and actually because of the difficult parking situation at the courthouse, which there is, obviously, they would rather come here, and Gary assured me that that was, it's, the dates are April the 16th and 17th, which is a Tuesday and Wednesday, so it obviously wouldn't interfere with our meetings, and so at this point, they would like to, you know, use this room for their debates this year, so.
I personally don't see an issue with it, so.
It's okay with our schedule? We don't have any other outside agencies meeting either one of those days?
We can double.
I'm just saying, we don't have any other...
Yeah, as long as there's no conflict, conflicts, I don't think it would be an issue.
I told them by then, particularly the entrance on the south side of the building will be open again by then, hopefully, it's a little difficult getting in the other building right now, but that'll be resolved by then.
They're just moving away from Holiday Inn?
Yeah.
All right. New application received from Robert Babbitt for the Roundhouse Authority and Planning Commission. Do we have any openings on the...
We have plenty on the Roundhouse. We could bring him in and interview him.
Okay. Penny, would you help us out with that? Okay, we are near the end. Any executive session needs? Anthony?
Not from me.
Not from you?
Those certainly.
Pretty good. Well, Mr. Barnhart is not here in body, but I'm sure he's here in spirit, and we wish him well and his recovery, so. Mr. Boyd, we will look to you.
I will make a motion to recess.
We are in recess, thank you.